Good evening. Welcome to City Taft Planning Commission's regularly scheduled meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. We're meeting in the City Hall Council Chambers at 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California. The City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are streamed at, I'm just gonna say youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be mailed to the city clerk at cityofclerk@cityoftaft.org. Made by phone to the city clerk office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. And as we're getting ready, we'll do go with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'll lead.
Ready? Yep.
Stand, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for today's invocation, we have Pastor Joey Pittman.
Return your favor.
It's good seeing you guys. Let's bow our heads. God, we're so thankful of our City of Taft. We're so thankful that guys spend their time working. We just pray for that divine wisdom that you give us, God. We pray for our community, for a unity through all peoples, Lord God. We know that you're a great God and you desire us to all work together. So we do, we pray for that unity. We pray for wisdom. We pray for those that are less fortunate, that as we continue to make plans, God, that find ways that can help them, Lord. So we just thank you for all that you do for us. In the name of Jesus, everybody said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. That moves us on to roll call.
Okay. Chairman Livingston?
Present.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Present.
Commissioner Dabney?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
And Commissioner Oregon's absent.
Okay. We have no citizens' request for public comments, so we will skip from one to item two. I'll accept a motion for the minutes from September 4th.
Oh, motion.
I'll second.
Our vote, please.
Commissioner Dabney?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes. Okay, we're now on to item three, the Planning Commission review minor zoning ordinance amendments related to housing element programs aimed at removal of constraints. Take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. As I mentioned in the title, we're gonna go right ahead and start tackling some of the draft programs that have been outlined in the draft housing element that's out for Housing Community Development Review through the state and is publicly available as well. These are pretty simple, and that's why I use the term minor, is that they are dealing more with definitions and whatnot, but I'll read through the staff report. And if you want, I could go over some of the changes, but they're fairly brief. Somewhat simple, but they handle the first couple of programs we have set up. So as I mentioned, the effort of the effort to draft the housing element has resulted in a series of housing programs to promote the development of new housing, preserve existing housing structures, and to reduce barriers to the development of housing. Specifically, Draft Housing Program 5, which has multiple programs under it, is focused on the removal of constraints to develop various types of housing. Draft Housing Program 5. A seeks to amend the zoning ordinance to improve the definitions of small multifamily housing by defining two-unit dwellings, or commonly known as duplexes. Define multifamily housing at three units or more and allow triplexes and fourplexes by right in the R2, R3, and MU zone districts that are intended for multifamily residential developments. Draft Housing Program 5B seeks to amend the zoning ordinance to include employee housing standards. Definitions will be added to the ordinance for small and large employee housing developments. Allow small employee housing, similar to single-family housing, in multiple zone districts, and allow large employee housing in the A or agricultural zone district, subject to a site plan review. The large employee housing developments are typically for agricultural workers. Attaches an initial draft resolution with the initial draft of zoning ordinance amendments to accommodate both updates, updated standards for two-unit triplex, fourplex residential development, and the standards for employee housing. So there's not individual resolutions for the topics. These are kinda getting blended together, covering the definition section, which is 6-1-19, which includes a minor amendment to dwelling multifamily, and then new definitions for employee housing, and then the specific definitions of small and large employee housing. And then since I started utilizing the term two-unit dwellings when the state is pushing to allow two units on every single-family lot across the state, pretty much. And so in going through the housing element process and looking at different ways to better define or more clearly define things in the zoning ordinance, our consultants found that it'd probably be good to define two-unit dwellings. We typically know them as duplexes, but they could be, they could take any form, attached to each other, detached. However creative somebody wants to get with two dwellings on their property, it does not include ADUs. ADUs are you know, intended to be more accessory to a single-family dwelling, or they're also allowed in multifamily as well, so that's not a two-unit. So somebody could have the single-family, an ADU, the junior ADU, which has taken a portion of the existing house, and then have one of these second units. So there could seem like there's four units on a single property. So we didn't get that detailed into the definition, other than when a property has an ADU, that ADU's not the second unit. So that's the definitions there. And these are all drafts, we're not acting on them tonight. And then I updated the land use tables in Chapter 4, covering the residential districts. Chapter 5, which is the commercial districts, but it more amended the mixed use, the MU zone, covering the multifamily dwelling allowances so that we could separate when something is a fourplex or smaller, or five units or bigger. Anything up to a fourplex could go straight to billing permit processes. And then five or larger would have some form of a site plan review, depending on what they're submitting. And then in Chapter 7, that covers the agricultural changes for the land uses. And this is pretty standard statewide. One thing that's pretty interesting thing about that is there's really been no changes to the employee housing law with the state for 20 or so years. It's been more legislature wanting to pass more and more ways to get more housing out there. They're pushing to get all of us to make sure we have, if you have an A-zone or Ag-zone in your city, you need to have these standards in your code to match up with the state. And then the last section in the resolution is some more specific standards when it comes to, we call it agricultural employee housing, but it could apply to any business that somehow needs to have groups of employees work in their town, you know. Doesn't happen here, but it could be, you know, like if there's a mining town or something like that, where they could use single-family and have up to six adults in there slash employees. It's still seen as a single-family home, but once you get over that, you gotta be in a different zone to have more of the dormitory or barrack-style living for something like that. So these are the first two programs, and the Program 5 and the Housing Element that we're trying to start knocking out, and we'll go one by one or take two at a time like this to get our zoning ordinance more in line with the state law and what they're wanting to push, every possibility of housing that's out there if we, you know, don't have it as well defined in our zoning code. So they're reviewing that right now. This wasn't a big area of discussion when we met with them virtually back in August before we sent the draft up for review. But this seemed fairly easy to get it moving. We could probably have it as one of our first actions, either late this year or maybe in January when we come back and get, I confirm with our consultants that this is in the right direction of what they were looking for with those programs in the housing element. So I'll end my staff report there. This is pretty simple and straightforward. But I'll take any questions you may have about either the topics here with the small multifamily or the employee housing.
Okay. Any questions for our director?
No.
I was wondering, it sounds like the state's actually making it a little easier or more defined to make properties more dense for the most part.
Pretty much.
But is the county also in, and are they also doing the same thing? Because I've noticed a lot of resistance from the county about doing anything on overhousings.
Well, one thing is a lot, what many jurisdictions could do is just focus on the housing element, get it done, then start working on the changes. And I don't think the county has quite yet started what similar constraints that have been identified in their zoning code or the general plan. But I believe they are doing, they might be doing a comprehensive zoning code update or general plan in the next year. And that's gonna be a two-year process for them because they're so darn big.
Right.
And that will, they'll probably do more a comprehensive thing than knock all 12 programs regarding zoning constraints or general plan constraints and do it all at once. Where our general plan's in a good spot, so we have to amend things throughout the zoning code. And I wanna take it like one or two topics at a time with you guys, just so we can exhaust it and then we know what we're adopting. But everybody in our county and valleywide will be starting that this year, later this year, or January of next. The LA Bay Area, their stuff was all adopted over a year ago, so they're in the middle of their changes. So if anything comes up where they're coming up either with unique ideas or a different view on some of the bills that the state has passed, we'll be coming back with an amendment to mimic that if that becomes the new norm.
Right.
But so far, this is more of the easier stuff. I left some of the others because I need the time to sift through it all and make sure I'm drafting it right. Because I don't like just kinda copying and pasting verbatim from the state law because it's not written well for anybody to legibly read. So it's more, how do I take their 10 pages of, it's not even legalese, it's just a real nebulous way of if this, that, and referencing other sections. So we really have to redraft these to make it more legible and coherent in our zoning code or more usable by the public to, you know, even with ADUs and other sections, it's, that's the fun part of working on these zone changes.
Yeah. Okay, the only question I have, and it really isn't a negative so much, is I have a picture of a 50 by 100-foot lot trying to put all four of those on it.
Right. And breaks.
Are we in any kind of a position where we don't have any choice either? Because I think that you eventually could end up having to override, you know, easements and.
The only way you probably could effectively put all on that and even get the couple parking spaces you may need, whether it's garage or carport, is probably gonna be something's gonna need to be on a second story.
That's right.
You know, go vertical a bit to get all four pieces of that of single-family, the interior junior ADU, an ADU, and then that second unit that's allowed.
Second story.
And even with the density that Vice Chair Schertz mentioned, they also, within that law of allowing all that, some of these lots could be split if they're vacant.
Right.
But the existing structure that limits the splitting part of the law that they passed. But some of the lots that still may be vacant, somebody could take a, you know, over 6,000 square foot lot and make two, 3,000s out of it.
Yeah.
And put two units on each of those.
And we have enough of those burned-out lots around that that's not an unrealistic possibility. And I'm not sure that I have a problem with the density itself so much as if it creates any kind of issues related to safety, to the ability to service the different units. So, and I'm just concerned about it. I don't know that there's any reason to do anything about it with this. It just popped into my head. I also noticed that the state just touted two more laws that they've recently passed to improve housing. So I'm assuming you're gonna be playing catch-up for six months at least.
Sometime next year I'll bring them before you guys. I'll let somebody else do the summaries.
Yeah, let him get that done and then check them out and see what you can do with it. That's great. Well, in that case, this is just a review, right? You don't need a motion, do you?
No, it's just like I've done with other co-changes. I don't wanna just drop it on you. I wanna introduce it, flesh out some ideas and discussion, and then I'll bring it back at a later date, but probably no later than January, February next year.
Okay.
Because by the time we get to November, fingers crossed, we'll be right back to maybe finishing up the housing element.
Yeah.
We'll get that nailed down, and then we'll start knocking out the program zone changes.
And I think it's really important to have the housing element done
Right.
before we make changes anyways. I think it's a
Yeah.
the clear impetus for doing the changes is the housing element. So if it's not done, no need to rush this stuff.
Yeah, the state also, they don't expect most cities to get a lot of their zone change programs done. It's like a 24-month process post-element adoption.
My fault.
25 cents, please.
First time I've done that.
So we're getting ahead with this, but I believe we have 12 to 14 different constraints, things that would involve a zone change of some kind. So we'll start really knocking those out in 2025.
Okay. Unless there's any more questions, we'll move on to item four, which is the Planning Director Report.
Yes, so if any of you have been looking for me in the office the past 10 days or so, I haven't been here. Part of that is, is kind of a quick fall conference season for various planning and economic development stuff. So the first thing was the city manager, myself, his assistant, and the chamber. We went to the International Council of Shopping Center, Western Conference they do, and this year was out in Palm Springs. It was pretty well-attended. It's a slightly smaller venue, so the big crowd looked bigger, felt bigger. But I will say we had a lot of traffic past our booth. It probably helped that it was a little bit smaller and easier for people to get to us than everybody else. A lot of good discussions and a lot of new people out there looking for opportunities statewide. It seemed like there's a lot more people that were willing to look beyond the large metros. Maybe they're understanding the growth and opportunity in Kern County and Fresno and up and down the valley. So had some good discussions there. And it seemed like others did pretty well as well. There's nothing nothing major to report out of something's going here or going there. We're still keeping in touch with all our contacts for various things. We did talk to, you know, In-N-Out, they're not coming, but we'll talk to them every single time. But they are growing like crazy. If you haven't noticed, they're in multiple states now. You know, we talked to Panda Express and Chipotle and Jersey Mike's, and they're, they're pretty regular attendees. And city manager, myself, we all maintain those main regional contacts, and that's why we go to this Western show, because it's mostly the Arizona, California, Nevada, Oregon, Washington regional managers, not the nationwide ones, so we talk to the New York guy or whatever. So trying to maintain that first-name basis as best we can with them so that, you know, if we grow to the right number, get the right traffic count, whatever it may be, and we hit their or our region comes on their radar a little bit better because they're still wanting to max out Bakersfield or Shafto, whatever it may be. There's all those little things that spin their wheels, so we wanna make sure we're out there, they know who we are, give them our little tchotchkes. We give out a little thumb drive with all the information of available properties in town. I find the ones that are on the commercial Realtor websites and put the flyers on that as well. And I'm also making sure that a lot of these folks do dabble in the residential side, so I keep pushing the Colston track if they know somebody who's looking for residential property and all that. So had a lot of people interested in both sides of it with us, of commercial and residential. And we'll see what comes of it in the next 12 months. So that was the first conference. The second one this past weekend was the APA California, so American Planning Association, my fellow planners up and down the state. It was down in Riverside. Had some really good sessions down there, but probably the best thing I did there was yesterday, walked over, almost over three miles, walking to and through some affordable housing projects. I know it's, some folks have their varying opinion on what affordable housing is, but the five projects we walked through, none of them were like the others. There was a Habitat for Humanity project that was not their typical single house with a garage, and they help a family with children. This was a 10-unit, 450-square-foot bungalow court-type things, like we have some of those six-unit type deals. But they are under something with the Riverside County Housing Authority and all the different public services that may be needed for the tenants, and I think they're the full range of adults, but they're generally on their own. And they're full range of age. I think some are veterans, some are not. Some male, some female, but it's single person, single tenant. And it's kind of a studio-ish setup with galley kitchens and all that, but they have some open space. They have a couple spaces up for parking if they have a car. But it is, there is some rental assistance and all that involved with it, so it was a good project. Another one was almost 250 units, but they're barely breaking ground. Has a 60-unit senior apartment building on its own, and then 120 or so, maybe 150 units that are the family or folks that would qualify for the one-to-three-bedroom type of housing. So you kind of mix of seniors and regular aged adults and families on the same property, and that was on a former Cal Fire property. So a state-owned, so they went through the state on that process. But it's actually gonna provide, they're doing other sound buffering, but it's right adjacent to a freeway, so these are four-story buildings that are now gonna provide sound buffering for the single-family right across the street. But it's a really nice-looking project. I won't be able to get you any images of it till it's done a year from now. That was really good. The third one was like a 40-unit apartment complex where the services that track former foster children that turn 18 now can't be in a foster home or anything because they're an adult now. It's getting them into there, and a lot of them are high-achieving. They're going to college, they're going to UC Riverside or some other, the community college that's there in Riverside as well. So there's some assistance with those adults as well to make sure they're still on track now that they're on their own. But it's, they could only be there a max of two years. It's part of the definition of transitional housing that the state has, and we have it in our code. You can help them all you want, but you got that 24-month time limit, and then they've, hopefully, are able to handle life on their own and move on. And then the last one was another transitional housing, but they managed to save three or four average-size Victorian homes, and those are more bunked together. So the prior one was, they had their own unit. This one, there is two to three beds
Common wall.
with about four or five rooms in each house, with a slightly larger communal kitchen, kind of their own little open space area for all four or five houses, backyards. They took all the fences down. They have a garden-ish type area, workout gym, and laundry facilities. But a lot of them were more homeless, like imagine taking our 40 or so people, and they would go into this facility where they get whatever drug counseling and other, back on their feet to get them a job. And again, it's another 24-month deal where clock starts to help them with all the services, and hopefully it takes hold, gets them on to their next steps, and they're able to move on to their own housing situation after that. So there's a whole wide variety of projects that are going to Riverside, but Riverside really is, all this is only happening like the last 10 years. I was there before I came here, and a lot of their downtown and other areas are struggling. Still empty shops and all that, and they're a 200,000-person city with other cities all around it. So they're a good backdrop to show what can happen. Granted, there are bigger resources or more there, but it still takes these little groups, private nonprofit groups that are actually driving those projects. But the city's able to support it there, so made a lot of contacts with that and then keep touting Taft. And Kern County as a whole, I think their stuff can come to Bakersfield, Shafto, Wasco, and us. It'll just highlight the area for the people who bring that. And I told them, you know, if you could bring the market rate stuff too with the affordable, the teachers, oil workers, whoever has the job to pay for the market rate goes there, and then the folks that need a little more support to for the affordable side. And it will show that the quality and architecture and design is there for both.
Right.
You know, because it's tough to sell something people aren't used to, and affordable housing still has kind of a bad rap and moniker to it, so hopefully we'll be able to get both and also get it near Roseltrails and downtown to get that many more people closer to the downtown area, because we need a little bit more of that
Foot traffic.
population, foot traffic downtown that, because we have our longstanding businesses. But if you get more people there, it's a higher likelihood for the other shops that are empty to get filled in.
Yeah.
Or somebody will invest and improve those buildings to get the businesses in.
Right.
And I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Been a busy 10 days.
You, the Habitat is having to get creative
Yes.
in some areas. It sounds like what that really was for them there. I know in Escondido, it's been 10 years ago now, the local chapter of the National Associations of Office and Industrial Properties had a volunteer day where they helped build essentially condos. You have all the construction, you know, the commercial construction guys, that's not a big deal to put up a condo. It's not the same thing as single-family home for them. And they, they would do, you know, a small lot with 10 units, and it was still going to be owned, but it was done as condos because the amount of land that's available is limited. Not generally a problem for us, but it's an interesting thing that Habitat's having to look outside the box in some areas, and I'd imagine that that's another area where they're getting impacted by the amount of available land by comparison. So that's fascinating. Thank you. Our city attorney, does he have any statements?
He does not have a statement.
Okay. Any commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments?
I got one. We got a, we got an Old Dorado one-year kickoff concert this weekend, so anyone that could make it, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Friday, Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday. Eighties?
It's at the Old Dorado Building, and
All eighties.
Putting in a lot of work down there, so it's
Should look nice.
It's always, it's gonna be a fun event, so.
I just want to remind everyone that our election is coming up, and it's surprising to me how many people that I talk to that have no intention of voting, and it's, it's just our opportunity, and we look at what's going on right now across the world and across our nation, on the East Coast with the devastation that happened there because of the hurricane. And sometimes we in Taft, we're kind of in a little bubble, and it just doesn't seem to like really affect us, but it really does. And I just encourage everyone to take the time to register to vote and to vote, because it's not even just important on the national level, but county-wide, statewide, and our local election and all the propositions, and some of them directly affect us and the well-being of our community. So I would just really encourage you to take the civic, it's a privilege, but take it and use it and impact, you know, impact your world.
Absolutely.
That's all.
And currently, if you're not registered, get registered, but even if it's up to the last day, California allows you to register at the polling place. So there's no excuse not to actually walk in, register, it doesn't take very long to do, and then proceed to vote, so I'm definitely supportive of that. Let's move on then to, I believe, yes, indeed, it's the identification of the representative to the city council.
I think you should do that.
I'll second that.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll be happy to do so. Then we're moving on to an adjournment. I just need a motion for adjournment.
Oh, motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
All right.